Director Luke?
Here.
Director Monchar?
Here.
Director Simse?
She's not able to be here tonight?
Director Schreiber?
Here. We're going to hold our open comment questions or our open questions until after our superintendent provides his report because we're anticipating that some of the questions might be answered by his comments. So I'll turn to the approval of minutes before I turn to Dr. Schreiber for his... For our entertainment, I'm going to approve the two items under minutes, number 2.1 and 2.2. Motion for those two items?
Second.
Move to the second. Thank you. Any questions or discussions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carried. Now, I will turn to Dr. Schreiber for his superintendent report.
Thank you, President Schreiber. On the board agenda tonight, we do have some significant changes in regard to personnel and programming. Earlier this spring, we were made aware of increased number of students coming out of the early intervention program from our preschool type of program, coming into kindergarten for next school year with a high level of increased needs from that student population. Currently, we offer life skills and autistic support services over at Carnegie Elementary, and we also offer them at Crafton Elementary as well. Life skills autistic support, teachers have a certain restriction in regard to the number of students that they are allowed to have on their caseloads. With the increased number of students that we are projected to have next school year, it would have taken both of our teachers at Crafton and Carnegie over their limit for number of students that they could have on their caseload. So what that did was presented a challenge in regard to where services would be provided, what additional staff would be necessary to provide those services to our students. So what we looked at then is a model of transitioning services from Carnegie over to Crafton Elementary School, which is very similar for a lot of school districts to do, is to consolidate life skills autistic support, sometimes emotional support, sometimes a variety of special education services that we provide to our students and consolidate them to one specific building in the district. That model increases the continuity of education. It provides the opportunity for teachers to share their resources with one another. It also creates a little bit more flexibility with student programming as well in regard to where their services are provided. At the same time, we're also experiencing an increased number of students who require English as a second language service, our ESL population. Our ESL population since 2020 to the current has pretty much doubled in size, moving from 95 to 100 kids up to this year, close to 180 students district-wide. ESL services, as many of you know, it is provided exclusively at the elementary level out of Carnegie, but we also provide services up here at the junior, senior high school. Servicing both of these populations, our special education students and our ESL population, add value to the lives of our students. They add value to our community at large to be able to provide exceptional services for all groups of students, which we take extremely serious. The confluence of those two issues, coupled with space challenges that we have at Carnegie Elementary School. Currently, every room at Carnegie Elementary School is being used for some level of service, whether it's for classroom instruction, for special education services, for ESL services as well. We're at our capacity, not necessarily from a total number of students perspective, but the combination of the different services that we need to provide for our children. Taking those matters into consideration, our board agenda tonight has some personnel issues on it that will transition the learning or life skills autistic support from Carnegie and placing it over at Crafton Elementary School. And in the process, what you'll see in the board agenda, sometimes it's a little confusing to read, especially when you see terminology like eliminating positions. So I want to make sure that that's clarified. It's eliminating positions, but you do need to make sure that you read the whole way down through the personnel agenda to see that there are also creation of positions. So the position that's eliminated at Carnegie Elementary for the life skills autistic support is later in the agenda being created as a life skills autistic support classroom teacher at Crafton, and you'll notice that it's not just one teacher, but it's also two teachers. So we're increasing the number of special education teachers to serve this population. So we'll have a total of three life skills autistic support classrooms at Crafton Elementary School to provide the services for those children. In addition to that, our paraprofessional staff is extremely skilled in providing additional services for our children. For that reason, there were three paraprofessional positions eliminated from Carnegie, but then they were recreated over Crafton. And looking at the board agenda, you'll see it's not just three positions, but it's six positions that are being created. So we're actually, we're adding an additional life skills autistic support teacher, we're adding an additional three paraprofessionals. And then we also had to take a look at the services that we provide in regard to speech therapy. Speech therapy runs very closely with special education, with the needs and services that our children have. We were rapidly approaching high levels of caseloads from one of our teachers who works, who was split between Crafton Elementary School and the junior, senior high school. So what the board agenda also calls for is an addition of a halftime speech therapist position here at the junior, senior high school, which then frees up our speech therapist at the Crafton Elementary School to be there entirely to provide additional services and be able to create that community within a community at Crafton to provide those services as well. In addition to that, what we have recognized at Carnegie Elementary School is that there is a need with a building that was designed in 1954 as a high school. It was not designed to be an elementary facility. It has some aging infrastructure to it. It has some structural issues that need to be addressed. So we are going through the process of looking at a major renovation project at Carnegie Elementary School. That project will include plumbing, electrical, mechanical, ceiling, floors, roofing, ADA requirements to make bathrooms more accessible. It includes remodeling all of the restroom facilities for our children to use, increases safety and security initiatives as well, more or less to create an environment that our children deserve, to have, to have free access to our curriculum, to be able to move freely through that building, maybe you'll have access to many services. In addition to those repairs, we're also taking a look at the addition of a cafeteria. Cafeteria is a word that if you put into word, it comes up as a spelling error. However, cafeteria is a combination between cafeteria and an auditorium. I think those of you who know Carnegie Elementary School, the cafeteria is currently down in the basement. It's not the most pleasant environment to eat in. It does have windows, but the windows are placed up a little bit higher. So the cafeteria then will be placed in the back corner of the U-shape of the backside of the building, next to the stadium, which will serve, one is a cafeteria. And then also, when we take a look at auditoriums, auditoriums that were designed in 1954 for high school students were for large group assemblies, for plays and for musicals. Right now, we use our auditorium for, in many cases, when, well, we bring them together for large group assemblies, those kind of things, for speakers that come in and present. We also use it for recess and some other playground activities when the weather's inclement. So the cafeteria is, that concept, it's a large, open space. It will have movable types of seats and tables for children to eat at, and it also has a large pull-down type of auditorium seating that would position it so that you could also perform, have plays, have assemblies and different types of things that would be capable of seating all students in the building as well. So the issues there that were outlined and the challenges that we faced were the increased population of some students who require some services that we take pride in providing to our students, an increase in the number of students who require ESL population, and then also the challenges with the space that we currently have at Carnegie. The combination of those issues, again, the increased number of staff that we're putting on, and then also the renovation project that's being taken into consideration, naturally will have an impact on our operating budget. Mr. Bilby will, later in the presentation here this evening, will talk about our proposed final budget and the impact of the additional positions, the renovation project, those types of things that will certainly have an impact on our financial planning, not just for next year, but then also for three years to come. It's extremely important to me, to Mr. Bilby, and I know, I believe I can speak for the board, on the financial stewardship that we have for this district, is making sure that we take the taxpayer money and that we distribute it wisely to make sure that it is having a direct impact on our children, on our staff, in our community as well. The new facility down at Carnegie will also, with that cafeteria, also open up a lot of opportunities for better community events as well. The gymnasium at Carnegie gets used quite often by a lot of our organizations, outside organizations and so on. So it not only adds value to our children, but also adds value to our community as well, and also with property values, with increasing the facility that we have to offer instruction for our children. That was the piece that I had on the personnel agenda and the impact that it'll have on facilities, and then also with the components with renovation projects. On the board agenda, we also have a resolution. That resolution is designed to take advantage of a Pennsylvania School Improvement Facility Plan grant. This resolution allows us then to apply for state funding in the form of a grant will help support financially some of the plans that we have in place. It's a very competitive grant. Whether we will get it or not, we're unsure, but nonetheless, we're committed to making sure that the grant application material is submitted on time and it accurately reflects the needs of our buildings. I believe off my notes, that covers a lot of what I wanted to cover in those areas. However, another reason that we are assembled here this evening is also to recognize and appreciate three individuals who made the challenging decision this past year to retire from the Carleton School District. Two, is Dave Doolick here? Dave's there, right? Good, okay. Just making sure, right? So we got all three. I didn't want to read names of anybody that wasn't here. So three people who are going to, submitted their intention to retire, and I know that's what brings many of you here this evening to celebrate that as well. But first, just like to express our combined gratitude and have the best wishes for Denise Cook. Denise is off to my right. And Denise is retiring after 23 years of dedicated service to the Carleton School District. Her commitment and caring support to our students have left a lasting impression on both our staff and our students. Denise has become more, she's been more than a paraprofessional. Nice thing about Denise is you get to see her in the hallways, walking through, working and collaborating with children, working with our instructional staff. She's been a mentor, she's been a guide, and truly, she's been a friend to everyone that she worked with. Sure.
I think I cried more today than I did. And one of the students that was a Crafton student, everybody, you know, he came to me the end of eighth period, he said, "Mrs. Cook, can we take a picture?" And his other peers were there that he asked to be Mr. Tough Guy. And so he hugged me, and I have pictures and I hugged him, and he just sort of walked in front of all these, and he held on to me and I hold on to him, and I said, "You're making me cry." We were both crying. And I said, he said, "Please, I don't want you to go. I don't want you to go." So I'm like, so now I don't know.
Denise, I do know, it was a struggle. It is a hard decision to make for all of our retirees when they make that decision, but that's not going to stop me from continuing my notes that I had for Denise. And you can tell, in her daily work, she exemplified passion, she exemplified patience as she connected with our students, helping them to achieve the best in a nurturing environment. I think that definitely something you created, a nurturing environment. Her efforts have significantly contributed to creating an atmosphere where learning thrives and students are empowered to reach their full potential. And we also bid farewell to Scott Canty, who retired, who is retiring after 22 years of service as a school counselor here at Carleton Junior Senior High School. His impact on our students and the guidance he has provided to our students will not go unnoticed for sure. Scott has helped many students navigate the complexities of school life, navigating through, selecting courses that align with their career aspirations, and taking them beyond the life of high school, whether it is to directly enter the workforce, whether it's to go into the military, or whether it's to pursue a post-secondary degree. So even up until today, I know Scott has been working very closely with students, ensuring that they have the proper credits to meet that finish line of graduation, and in some cases, to move on to the next grade level. And Scott is very careful to check those records and make sure that they're accurate before moving forward. And I know Scott plans to remain with us throughout the summer, for a little bit anyway, to help craft the master schedule, to make sure that the students' needs are met. School counselors commit a lot of work towards developing master schedules, making sure the kids get what, not necessarily what they want, but what they need, and do align with their career aspirations. So Scott, thank you for your work, for your 22 years of service to the Carleton School District.
It's been a real transition. I started out the elementary school, so I got full experience there as an elementary counselor, and then coming up with a high school. I love what I've done for the last X number of years, and I haven't had anybody cry to me yet. Although I did have a couple of juniors come in and they're talking about this, talking about that. I said, "Okay, that's great. So when you get to be a, when you get to your senior year, I have to tell you, I won't be here." Yes, you will. So I've broken the news to a few of them, but I've certainly enjoyed my time here, and I greatly appreciate all the assistance. Joe, I got to thank you an awful lot for the getting us the partner program involved in the building. This year, we had the biggest, the largest number of students we've ever had, and it's, the program continues to grow, not only with PNC, but also within the community here. So, thank you.
And finally, Dave Doolick. Earlier this year, we said goodbye to Dave Doolick. He was a strong member of our maintenance team who retired after 16 years of service with the district. Dave's unwavering commitment and hard work have been an integral part of the Carleton School District family, ensuring that our facilities were not only operational, but also were welcoming and safe. If you know Dave, Dave, he has a great demeanor. He consistently had a smile on his face, always had something positive to say, in many cases, funny, and were entertaining at the same time. But he always embraced that positive attitude, and I can say, even in the morning hours at, what, 5:00 sometimes, 4:30, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, when the snow's coming down outside, Dave and his crew, they're out there with the shovel, they're out there with the plow, pushing things away, all out of a genuine care and concern for our staff and for our students and for our community, to create a safe way to get into school. His hands have repaired, maintained and cared for our school, making it a better place for students, teachers and staff. His dedication and diligence, who wrote this speech? Did you write this? His dedication and diligence have made a significant difference in our daily school life. Dave, you know, I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Appreciate all the work that you've put in, your commitment to the district. It's been a pleasure working with you as well.
I just want to let you know that it's not 16 years, it was 29 years, three months. It's been a struggle. You know, I gotta say, I went to school here, I lived in the community all my life, Carnegie Crafton, and one of the things I'll never forget is the relationships that I've built with different administrators, different board members, and faculty and staff. It's just been, it's just been incredible memories that, you know, I'll be remembering, cherishing for a long, long time. I just have to say that now that I've just retired, I look in my wardrobe, it's green and gold. I mean, I've got, I'm geared up for a long, long time with my colors. I've never, and I think I bleed green and gold. But I just want to say thank you and thank everybody. Like I said, it's been a pleasure, and I really, really appreciate it. So thank you.
So as Dave, Denise and Scott embark on this new chapter of their life, we hope it's filled with the same joy and satisfaction that Dave brought to our school community. Once again, we're grateful for your years of experience, your dedication, your commitment to the Carleton School District. After we have our chance for public comment and also run through the personnel agenda, we'll take a short recess, and you can see off to the left, Mr. Racekott and his team prepared some nice treats for us. We did project that we were going to have several visitors. I think we planned for close to 60. So please, when we do take a recess, please enjoy the refreshments, and then afterwards, we'll continue with the normal operations and the business of the district. For those of you who are here for the celebration part, you're more than welcome to leave at that point. We won't be offended, but you're also more than welcome to stay and contribute to the meeting as well. President Schreiber, that concludes my superintendent report.
Fantastic, thank you. There is a time at the beginning where we invite the public to comment on agenda items, and now we'll circle back and have that portion of our meeting. So two people had signed up to provide comment or make comment on agenda items. Mary, are you here?
Hi. It's okay to stand up here and, yeah.
Sure. Can you just share your name for us?
Yeah, I'm Mary Zucaro, and I'm a grandmother of a little child who's going to be entering Carnegie in kindergarten next year. And so I've taken a little extra interest in what's going on, especially when Carnegie comes up on the agenda. Dr. Schreiber, I appreciate what you had to say. So that answered one of my questions, which is, you know, what's driving this? And I can see that space is really a big deal. When you have to make shifts like this for kids, what arrangements are made in terms of transportation, especially families who are juggling maybe several children, and now they'll have them in two different schools and things like that? Is there, you mentioned something about transition. Can you maybe give us a little more detail about what's planned for that?
Absolutely. The transition component, taking this work and moving it forward, this is just the beginning steps. Mrs. Hoffman, our Director of Special Education and Pupils Services, will be reaching out then to families that will be impacted by the transition, moving in particular from Carnegie over to Crafton for those services. So I know she has a list of parents to reach out and contact. There will be, transportation is a, no matter what school district you're in, transportation can be challenging, just based on the number of routes that are running. Currently, we do have students who attend Crafton, especially our ESL population that move over to Carnegie. So we are accustomed to crossing boundaries and being able to get the transportation there. We work very closely with our transportation department, which is Monarch, who will be able to facilitate those runs. But Mrs. Hoffman will also reach out for any other extenuating types of circumstances to see what levels of interventions and what levels of support we can put in place to make the families feel more comfortable, especially during this first year of the transition. Additionally with that, there are multiple plans to work with the paraprofessional staff and the teaching staff across the board at Crafton, to make sure that we create a warm, welcoming environment for our children so that they can integrate into programming, into curriculum, have access to a lot of the resources. Very similar to the models that we run at both buildings already, but just to make sure that those services are available and we create that more nurturing environment for our children.
Thank you.
Is that addressed? You're welcome.
Darcy also signed up to make a comment?
How much?
Good to see you.
I was here last week, and I really appreciate all the information you guys gave, what led into this decision. A follow-up, a couple of follow-up questions from that are, did we ever discuss, did you guys ever discuss, like, splitting the community? Having K through 2 in a building, then 3 through 6, or K through 3 in a building versus 4 through 6, if spacing really is one of the main issues?
I can say that that was brought up, I know, 10 or 15 years ago, just the thought of reconfiguring both buildings and building, consolidating that. One building was discussed at one time, but even throughout this process, I will say that that topic was brought up and didn't necessarily pick up the legs that would be able to serve the purposes that we were looking to necessarily provide. But I speak for the board again, I think they're very open-minded towards thinking outside the box, of maintaining that focus on our students and making sure that we're doing what's best for our kids. But to answer your question, yes, it was discussed, however, it wasn't the model that we moved forward with.
And then the second part of that question is, the population that is moving, is it only the kids that would qualify for the autistic support life skills room that would need time in that room, or is it anybody with an autism diagnosis?
I'll make sure I get the correct answer from Mrs. Hoffman. I do believe that it's just the students who will require life skills autistic support out of those three classrooms. Not just a, if you're diagnosed with autism, it does not necessarily mean that you'll be transitioned over to Crafton.
Thanks.
Sorry, I know there is a sign up, and I was going first. Am I able to talk?
Please, just rise and share your name.
I'm Brittany Philippa-McKinnon. My son James is in second grade in Haley. He'll be there in a couple of years. My stepsons have all gone through, my husband's gone through the Carleton School District. I just have two questions. The first is, I'm a mental health professional, so I work in Pittsburgh Public Schools at Westinghouse. And I used to work at Oliver Citywide, which is not a neighborhood school, so I've experienced both neighborhoods that. And my question is for parent involvement. So if you don't have transportation, if you're a parent that doesn't have transportation, right? I don't have, I don't, maybe I don't speak much English, I don't really know anybody around me, maybe people around me don't really like me because I'm new to this community. How are we addressing family involvement in the school that we're moving these kids to? So how am I, as a parent of a child who has to now move to a different school, I'm not familiar with that community? But there's family reading night from 6:00 to 8:00 on a Friday. How are we addressing to make sure that those families get to participate in the school that my child's now going to with his peers? How do you, how are you going to address that?
I think communication is a critical component to that, to making sure that any type of evening event or other type of services will be provided. So students who will be enrolled over at Crafton will be, as far as e-blast and notifications, will receive the information from Crafton, as well as any messages from the principal, just to talk about any additional services or different types of events that are taking place.
But how do they get there?
The transportation issue, certainly I think transportation is a challenge for many people regardless, if you live in Carnegie and you're not in walking distance to the school, that in itself would be a bit of a challenge.
But I can carpool with my neighbor who's going to that event because it's at the same school. How are you going to address to allow those parents to get fully involved in the school that they're going to? What transportation would we offer them? That's equitable education.
So I think those are things that we can look into deeper to find out a solution to. I'm glad you brought it up so that we can think about it ahead of time. I'm curious, how does Pittsburgh public handle situations like that?
So most, so at the school I used to work at, which was Oliver Citywide, which is this full-time emotional support building for the district, we actually provided the transportation, the counselors, the teachers picked up families, brought them. We also provided bus tickets to them. So in Pittsburgh Public, obviously, the bus lines are more accessible there, so public transportation was a lot easier. We also ordered Z-trips for our families. So we got them Z-trips for them, but we were the full-time emotional support building, so our kids were from all over the district. But that's how we provided to ensure that our families could participate in it, because that's a huge thing. But that's how we provided to ensure that our families could participate in it because that's a huge thing. Also, the kids got to participate in their home schools. So like football, prom, and all that, like they could participate in their home school district, their home school and their neighborhood's activities. But my second question, and I'm going to come back to that because next year, I'm hoping you have a plan because I'm planning family reading night for the Carnegie Elementary School. So every one of my ESL parents should be able to get there that are coming from Crafton if they want to come. So I'll come back to you on that. The second question that I have is, so again, back to spacing and stuff. Why aren't we looking at potentially, and maybe you said it, but I was kind of splitting the staff and the students in those buildings? Why are we moving one full program over to the elementary school and moving one full program to this elementary school? Why aren't we working on splitting it and doing a commute so that they're staying in our community again?
Space, I think. Space was the biggest challenge. If we created, if we had to create services for all the children coming in, it would have required an additional learning, life skills, autistic support teacher at Crafton and an additional life skills autistic support teacher and three paraprofessionals for a total of six new positions on that end. The space challenge at Carnegie was simply that we could not squeeze. We're using every inch of that building to the part where we're looking forward to a renovation project that will help ease some of those burdens. So it was a space issue. We talked about trailers. We talked about a lot of different types of options that could create more space. Trailers, I don't think are conducive to education. I don't think are good for kids. I don't think it's good for staff. I don't think they're safe for going back and forth for a variety of different things. So mainly it was the space challenges that we were facing.
And then my third... Sorry.
You only said two. That's all you have.
Let's see if I can start thinking. So what is the cost? Do you have the cost of what it is for transportation-wise that we're busing kids from... Oh, because transportation... Let me be quite frank. Like transportation in Pittsburgh Public is hard to come by. Like, I don't know. We're walkers to the elementary school, so like we don't have to worry about transportation yet. But what is the cost of transportation? Like what are we spending to bus those kids from one neighborhood to the other?
I'd have to look specifically. We currently bus from Crafton over to Carnegie. I believe that is one bus run.
One bus run. It's about $250 to $300 a day.
Yeah.
So it's still being one bus run or are we now creating two?
Well, we would now need a bus to go from Carnegie over to Crafton. Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So... Sorry. This is Tina Gere. I'm sorry if I missed it, but with all of the improvements that we're looking to do to the elementary school and I understand they're needed, what is the cost impact to the families who live in this community regarding their taxes?
That, Mr. Bealby will address later with the proposed final budget. And I know there'll most likely be some discussion on what that impact will look like over time. But the final budget then gets approved at our next board meeting in June.
The kind of renovation we're considering would be a multimillion-dollar renovation, which will be spread out over many years. So it wouldn't be something that we would see an immediate significant impact.
We're already paying a substantial military compared to the communities around us. So to see that go up and higher would be detrimental to many families.
The good news is we've had two years of tax pay for us. So we're proud to be able to do that, but we'll get into more detail over here. There is a portion of the meeting at the very end where anybody can ask any question on any topic, not just agenda items. So if there's any other questions, we can address that at the very end. If the board is ready to move on to the next section and address the personnel questions? With a large section of items, let's split it up into two groups. Dr. Kreider recommended maybe items 1 through 9. And since there's a lot of detail here, I'm actually reading it out loud and we'll give it to specifics. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 3.1, the elimination of a life skills autistic support teacher. Number 3.2, elimination of a speech therapist position. Number 3.3, the elimination of a first grade teacher. 3.4, the elimination of paraprofessionals. 3.5, the creation of a life skills autistic support teacher. Number 3.6, the creation of a speech therapist position. Number 3.7, the creation of a speech therapist position. Number 3.8, the creation of a grade 2 teacher. And number 3.9, the creation of paraprofessional positions. I have a motion for those nine items under section 3.5.
Second.
Second.
Move to the second. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll take a vote. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. The second section here, numbers 10, 11, and 12. I'll entertain a motion to approve 3.10, the Crafton principal position. 3.11, the assistant superintendent position. And number 12, the superintendent contract. I have a motion for those three items.
Second.
Second.
Move to the second. Any questions or discussion?
Just one piece of discussion. I'm pleased to announce that joining us this evening is Sarah Parrish, who's a recommended candidate to serve as the principal at Crafton Elementary School. Ms. Parrish has a background in educational leadership, is committed to continuing the exemplary services that we provide to our students. She holds a bachelor's and a master's degree in educational leadership and administration from Westminster College. She's also actively pursuing her doctoral degree in educational leadership at Slippery Rock University. During her time at Insight PA charter school, she spearheaded initiatives that have enhanced core reading instructional strategies and established a comprehensive professional development program focusing on differentiated instruction, data-driven decision-making, and technology integration. These initiatives fostered a culture of respect and inclusivity within the school environment. She has some great leadership skills in technology, differentiated instruction, that will provide themselves very useful to the Crafton community. And I know that she's excited to join the team. She has some time set up next week to meet with staff, should she be approved this evening, to begin that process and that transition into Crafton Elementary School. We also have Dr. Jeff Taylor with us this evening. He is one of the agenda item for the assistant superintendent contract. This position was created back in November, approved by the school board as we had a resignation from our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment role to reconfigure a little bit of the central office to enhance the educational excellence across the district. Dr. Taylor comes to us with a distinguished background in education and leadership, most recently serving as superintendent of Norman School District. During his tenure, he led initiatives in STEAM programs, esports, and multimedia production, as well as significant advancements in sustainability and environmental literacy. His efforts resulted in the highest levels of student achievement in the history of the district. Dr. Taylor holds a Bachelor's of Science in Education from Edinburgh, a Master's in Science of Multimedia Technology, as well as school administrative administration from Duquesne University, and his doctorate in School Leadership is from the University of Pittsburgh. He's been recognized for a variety of awards, including Curriculum Leadership Award from PASCD and the Award of Excellence in School Communications from the Pennsylvania School Public Relations Association, among others. He also serves as the co-chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee on the Executive Board of PASCD. Dr. Taylor's skills and background provide a great fit for the Carleton School District. It's a great opportunity for us to take all the great initiatives that we have moving in the district, extending upon them. And for that reason, I am recommending to the board both Dr. Taylor and Sarah Parrish.
Any questions or comments? I'll quickly note that our third item under this motion is the superintendent contract to Dr. Kreider. And I think we all appreciate Dr. Kreider's leadership during COVID and everything he brought to the table. So we'll sort of have you hopefully shortly with us for an extended period of time. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And congratulations. Last item under personnel, so personnel agenda items miscellaneous. I call it additional items under miscellaneous. 3.13?
Personnel.
Personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda under 3.13. I have a... So move to the second.
Second.
Move to the second. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. All right. Now, to celebrate our new team, we have some food. To celebrate our retirees, we have some food. So let's do a quick recess. Please help yourself to a plate and congratulate the people going out and the people coming in. And our takeout containers? Again, the takeout containers. Please help yourself from the way out. So going back, we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters and litigation issues. I'll now turn it back to Dr. Kreider for the rest of the superintendent report.
Yeah, we have two administrative reports. One, mental health and school psychologist update from Dr. Surti. She's all set and ready to go.
All right. So I am Dr. Surti. I am the district school psychologist. I'm currently located at Carleton Junior Senior High School. Prior, I started at the high school last year. And then prior to that, I was at Carnegie for about eight years. So today I'm going to review some of our mental health data and some of the data that relates to school psychology in general. We'll go over some special education data and 504 plan data as well. So when I knew I was making this presentation, I really wanted to look at our data in special education pre-COVID versus post-COVID. Because I think in a lot of trainings and a lot of research, we're always talking about the pre-pandemic world versus the post-pandemic world. So I really wanted to look at what, how it changed for us. So pre-pandemic, if we look back, we'd about 245 students in special education across the district. Now have 276 students. That's about a 31 student increase. As we go through, we'll see that there's been an increase in specific populations and a lot of that is reflected tonight in a lot of our board agenda items. We've had a large increase in our students being identified with autism, as well as emotional disturbance and other health impairment during these post-COVID years. I also looked at the evaluations across the district to see if there are differences between Crafton, Carnegie, and the high school, to see if there were any trends. And what I noticed was right after COVID, Carnegie's number was actually lower than the area of evaluations. However, it kind of skyrocketed last year, whereas at Crafton and the high school, it was more consistent. There was a lot of transition in this year. And I think this is also going to be reflected with what, and things we can keep in mind as we make a lot of transitions at Crafton coming up in the next year. At this time, I had been a full-time, almost full-time at Carnegie as a school psychologist. We had changed the counseling position. Our children's staff had changed. Our principal changed. So there was a lot of transition in this time. And as everyone was getting used to that, transition interventions changed. Strategies changed. And then you can see once we got a stable position, we had a stable principal that was there for two years. We got another school psychologist in this time. So the building was again served in that area for special education needs. The number decreased. I think this really shows a lot of the preventative interventions. When you have the right staffing and consistent staffing and stability with your interventions, you can decrease a lot of needs and prevent evaluations. This is just the numbers behind that data, and so the data will go over. The next thing I wanted to look at is what type of evaluations we are completing. Where are we getting the most referrals? During COVID, we saw a big spike in 504 evaluations, a lot of school anxiety. And I wanted to see if that is still a consistent trend. So currently, most of our evaluations, this is this school year's data, have been for special education. The highest number of referrals is for initial evaluations. And then reevaluations are coming in second for testing, followed by our 504 evaluations and then gifted evaluations. This is the breakdown by building. I just wanted to see if there were any differences. And there wasn't too many large differences. The biggest difference I saw was that most of the reevaluations were at the high school. But that is what you would expect. Most students are identified for special education in earlier years. And by the time they get to the high school, you want to reevaluate to make sure their IEPs are still meeting their needs. So that's pretty consistent with data you would see across different schools. You also see reduction in gifted evaluations, which is also pretty consistent with what you would see in research because most students are identified in the earlier years prior to entering the high school level. The next, I looked at evaluation trends by grade level. I wanted to see if there was anything that could show maybe we were missing our population with our general core curriculum in any grade levels, where there are really high evaluation levels in any grades. It may look like there is in the younger grades, but that's how it should look. Typically, we're identifying kids in the younger years. We're noticing they're having a hard time learning their basic information. By the time they're in third or fourth grade, you're noticing that that builds up and that they're now not comprehending information. So that's what you would expect to see. We also see a little increase again around eighth and ninth grade, which is also common because they're transitioning to the high school. Again, it's another level of independence, both in terms of behavioral needs and academic needs. You can see kids struggling a little bit in that area. And this, in 11th grade last year, there was also a spike, something I'll continue to monitor to see if it was just a one-year thing. Was it a class population issue or something with the time going on? But it's something that I will continue to monitor. Lastly, I looked at the data by our disability category. I wanted to see where our programming was and was it meeting the needs based on our student population. So these are primary disability categories, and this is where it can get kind of confusing. So many of these students may have more than one disability that they're identified with. For instance, a student with autism, many of them may also have a disability category of speech and language impairment. But their primary disability, the number one disability we think is impacting them the most, is autism. So when I use our IEP radar, which is our system, all our data, they only allow me to run it by primary disability category. So it doesn't mean that there's only a small percentage of people receiving speech and language services. When you see 8%, a large percentage of the students under other categories like autism, even specific learning disability, may also have a secondary disability of speech and language. However, this is the primary concern that we're addressing through the IEP. So the number one category that we have currently is specific learning disability, which is about 25% of our special ed population. The second is other health impairment. That category may sound new to people, but a lot of our students in that population have ADHD diagnoses. You can also have medical diagnoses or neurological diagnoses or different mental health conditions. But most of our students in that category would fall under ADHD. The next, the third population that's largest is our autism population, and that has grown significantly in the last few years, followed by our emotional disturbance category. So this is a lot of colors, but I wanted to show the trend over the years. So starting further to the left, that's 2018 data to 2024 in each category. So you can see in 2018 to 2024, we've had a large increase in our autism population, as well as our emotional disturbance population. And also, if you look at our other health impairment population, they all increased. This is consistent with the COVID pandemic and a lot of the research. What we're seeing is the social and emotional needs of kids during that time really increased because they missed those developmentally for moments. So our data is consistent with that report. It looks like our students with specific learning disabilities decreased, but that, it doesn't mean that COVID and remote learning cert like cured learning disabilities. It just means that a lot of times now we're saying that their emotional needs or their social needs may be more significant than their learning needs. They may still have a learning disability, but the factor that's most impairing them are the emotional or social needs at that time. And that's the same with speech and language impairment. Most of all, the, close to probably the majority of our students with autism would also have this diagnosis. So you could really stack that number. The next was looking at our 504 service agreements. The high school has the highest number of 504 service agreements, which is expected based on our student population size. I wanted to look specifically at our 504 service agreements to see what are the needs we're addressing. So 504 service agreements can be for students that have medical disabilities like diabetes. Even some students with significant food allergies could have a plan. But it can also be more for mental health needs. And a lot of the students that we've been evaluating in the last few years have been for needs like social anxiety, school anxiety, anxiety, depression in general, some with autism as well, and ADHD. So when you look at the numbers, the majority, 67 of the 83, 504. So when you look at the numbers, the majority, 67 of the 83 five oh four plans in the district are related to mental health needs or neurological disability, whereas 16 are due to the medical or physical disabilities. So the last is our mental health data and support. So this is the area that I am most concerned with. I think a lot of our special ed data is pretty consistent with statewide data, but the mental health data, it's still consistent with state data, but it concerns me because of the level risk that I see. So moving from the elementary to the high school, I was used to doing some risk assessments, which is looking at students that have suicidal ideations or thoughts, or maybe homicidal ideations or thoughts. The high school and junior high and high school in general, you will see more risk assessments needed at those ages than in the younger ages, but we have a pretty high number. So last school year, I did 36 risk assessments. This school year, I've done 34 risk assessments, and these are for students with suicidal ideations. This doesn't include every risk assessment I did. These are first time risk assessments or second time. There are some students that I assess the risk weekly, daily for some, monthly for some, based on a plan. But these are normally initial first time level risk assessments. Of those, 17 resulted in hospitalization of some form. So whether that be an emergency psychiatric evaluation where I go with them to the hospital and we get them assessed immediately, or a partial acute partial hospitalization, which would be a program that they would go for a whole school day to a program, and it's all mental health based. They just receive group therapy, individual therapy, give about an hour to do schoolwork, and then they do medication management and try to stabilize the student. That number has remained pretty consistent from last year to this year, but what I can say is in last year, most of these hospitalizations were related to emergency psychiatric hospitalizations. So these are, they do an assessment where the student says, I have suicidal ideations, I have a plan, I have means to commit suicide, and I have intention to do it. That is what results in us getting to this level. The good thing about this number is although it's still high, most of them were partial hospitalizations. So it was at the point where a lot of times they had thoughts, they may have thought of how they were going to do it, but they didn't have imminent intent of acting on it. So we were catching it earlier, giving help earlier and preventing their emergency psychiatric hospitalization or long-term residential hospitalizations. So there is some progress that can be seen within that, but there is progress. The next is looking at our school-based outpatient services, which Ms. Vice will go over a little bit as well. There has been a decline in about 14 students being seen at the high school, but that is because we used to have two school-based outpatient therapists. We currently only have one, so she is at max capacity at all times with a waiting list of 40 students. Our student assistance program, which has helped students that are at risk for emotional, behavioral, or cognitive learning needs, that number increased by 20 students this year. That level of increase, it can also be seen at the elementary level at both buildings. There were increases in student assistance referrals. Positive at the elementary is you saw risk assessments decline at Carnegie Elementary. There was this slight incline at Crafton, but there were no hospitalizations this year at the younger grade levels, where there was four last year, so that's definitely an improvement there. So all of this data can seem really dark and gloomy, so I'm going to go into some positives. Oh, well, it's not yet, sorry. This is to show that we're not weak. This is the actual CDC data, and it shows overall that this is what's been happening across America. They surveyed high schoolers across the whole country to get this data. So if you look, the first line shows in 2011, and the last is in 2021. So in 2011, there was 28% of students said they experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. That increased to 42% in 2021. In terms of seriously considering attempting suicide, it was 16% in 2011, and it increased to 22%. It was for actually having planned to commit suicide, it was 13% in 2011, and it increased to 18%. An actual attempt to suicide increased from 8% of students to 10% of students. So there were a lot of increases in that area. And when you look at the data, they had divided it by many categories. I could go over race, socioeconomic status, gender, everything. But what I found to be really consistent with the data we have when I broke down our risk assessments was the difference between male and female data. Females here would be this blue line, so you can see it's significantly higher than the male data. This one is specifically for percentage of students experiencing persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. However, all the charts for all of these numbers look pretty consistent in terms of differences. What we know in the data is it doesn't mean that men or boys are experiencing less of this. They just report often less of it. The other thing we know about it is that boys are less likely to report their suicidal ideations, but they are much more likely to choose lethal means to commit suicide, and they're much more likely to actually commit suicide when they make an attempt. So they're less likely to give us the warning factors. When I look at our data at the high school of the 36 risk assessments, all but two were girls. There were two boys. Of all the hospitalizations, there were two boys. The rest were all girls. So our numbers are pretty consistent with what the data shows, but it doesn't mean there isn't a need for boys. It just means they may not be talking about it as often. So because of that, when I started, that was a big shock to me, moving from the elementary to the high school last year, and I really wanted to focus on at least one area that I felt I could have improvement. And that has led to some of the different trends and things I'll go over now. But as a district, three things that I've seen that we've really done over the years, and I think our board and our administration has done a great job of really taking mental health serious, listening to a lot of these concerns, reviewing the data, and I know a lot of other schools haven't done that, so I appreciate it immensely. But one thing we've definitely strive to do is educate students on positive mental health practices and strategies. The second was to provide students with access to mental health. And third was to improve students' feelings of school connectedness. So I'll go over how we've done those things. The first two, the CHIL Project, which I'm not going to go into a ton of detail because they're going to present on all of that in a minute, but it's provided us with tier one level, and our mentions giving students mindfulness lessons across both elementary schools in every classroom. School teacher consultation, teacher professional development, school-based outpatient therapies, who are giving students access to therapy in the school. Parents aren't having to pick their kid up from school to take them somewhere, which takes an extra hour out of the day. It's provided right in school, keeps kids in their classroom, it keeps them engaged in school. Also, medication management can be provided at all the buildings. A new thing we added this year was the PAWS classes and the PAWS position. And what that allowed us to do at the elementary school is within the specials rotation, there is a class that's taught by Mr. Alexander, and he teaches and goes over, directly instructing students on how do I manage emotions? How do I take perspectives of other people? How do I build relationships? How do I make responsible decisions? And how do I maintain and achieve positive goals? So the other area that I really worked on is school connectedness. So school connectedness is a broad term, but it refers to how students interact with teachers, how teachers interact with students, how teachers and staff interact together, how parents even interact with the staff. It goes through three main areas. The first is social affiliations, and this looks at just positive school relationships. Do students feel like they're cared about? Do they feel like they're respected by adults? Do they feel welcomed? The next is school belonging, and that's just feeling a part of the school, feeling safe and feeling happy about school. And the third is attitudes about school importance, caring about school, feeling it matters, feeling like what they're learning is relevant to them. So the reason this area is really important in that I chose to focus on it is research shows it's one of the biggest ways schools can impact students' mental health. Higher levels of school connectedness is linked to higher levels of positive behaviors, emotional practices, and academic outcomes. Elementary, middle, and high school students who report feeling connected to their school are less likely to drop out and less likely to repeat a grade. Students that feel connected to school were 48 to 66% less likely to have mental health issues, which includes suicidality, anxiety, and depression. They're less likely to experience violence, victimization, engage in risky sexual behaviors, or use substances. These effects have also been shown to persist into adulthood. In addition, school connectedness has also been shown to have protective factors for risky behavior, suicidality, and different mental health outcomes overall. So in the last few years, I've tried to build groups that have really focused on having kids feel connected to the school. And when I was reviewing our risk assessment data, I found that one of the biggest populations was one of girls. And within that population were girls that, I might speak with them, they felt helpless. They felt like they were the only ones struggling. They felt like no one could relate to them. They weren't relying on anyone. But as I kept going through these risk assessments, sometimes it'd be multiple in a day, they all had similar stories and similar trends. So I started to bring older students together with younger students, students that have already survived what younger students are going through, and give them advice. Let them mentor each other. It's amazing to see what a senior can say to a freshman, and when I listen to them, I could say the same thing, and they're like, you're not cool. I don't care, but as soon as it's a senior, they listen, and it's amazing, and it changes their life. But if you can have peers that are the same age talk with each other, and it's been huge in creating relationships. And it's created a really diverse group of students that come down to be together and share experiences and to support each other across the school. As we started that cross-age mentorship program, I found that a lot of these students also were lacking hope. They didn't know what career opportunities they could have. College might not be an option, or it was, but they had no one in their family that ever had gone to college. They didn't know how to start that process. So that's when I partnered with Mr. Alexander, and we started doing different field trips. We would go into communities and go into women-owned businesses. We went to a vast array of different kinds of businesses with women from all different backgrounds so that they could be exposed to that. We toured colleges, and we did just different community events as well. So that was one approach that started to try to build connections for the girls in our most at-risk population currently. The next was from that, Mr. Alexander came up with the Women's Empowerment Summit, and he invites these incredible, strong women to come in, and I know some of our school board came, and I really appreciate that. One of our own students is in the middle here presenting, and she talked about her experience of being a refugee and coming to the United States and what women's empowerment means to her and the privilege she feels it is to be a woman here. As part of it, all the students wrote what they were grateful for, and it was read out loud, and so much of it was about other strong women and people in their lives, and it was just a really positive day to bring everyone together. It brings all fifth, sixth, fifth and sixth grade girls from both Carnegie and Crafton Elementary together with the girls from the girl support girls at the high school. So it's a great event. Anyone wants to come next year? The next is an initiative by Mr. Alexander and a partnership and a grant we received from the Gray Bull Foundation to help us with some of the Carlington Light Projects. So as part of this, you can see students of all grade levels. At Crafton this year, a group of fifth and sixth graders got to go to Listen Lucy, which is a mental health conference, and they got to program with schools from all over the county to talk about mental health needs and how to solve those needs, which was awesome. At the top, you can see students having a poetry slam where they got to read their own poetry. They also get to go out into the community and learn about historical places in the community, so they can also feel connected to Pittsburgh in general. So you can see some of the pictures and events, the things they did there. Here's some more pictures and events. They went to the Cary Furnace, and they also got to go to the Smog Museum with Miss Patterson. So a lot of great opportunities. Next is the PAWS Club, which is at the elementary level. And again, it's teaching students to spread kindness, happiness, and also to learn about civic engagement and just being a good citizen. You can see what other projects they did at Carnegie Coffee. They made little coffee warmers with positive messages for the community. I got a few of them, some of them were pretty funny. And then they also even went and cleaned up the communities. These are some of the different field trips and events that they have done. Another was the Woodland Hills Student Summit. So we took a really diverse group of students, some that were National Honor Society students, some that were at-risk students that had a lot of discipline referrals and had not had a great academic success. But it was a combination, and they all came together, and they worked with, I think, 15 different school districts to put on an event where they all talked about special issues in the community. You can see this picture, a large group of our students worked on police relations. And in this picture, they're teaching students how to handle when they're pulled over by police. How can they do it respectfully? Well, you know, respecting the police, getting their point across, but also keeping themselves safe and how they interact and exploring all of those things. But you can see a group, it's a very diverse group of schools. They had community leaders, this is Neon Ford, that came to help with that group. This is a humanitarian group, so they came together talking about refugees and bringing how they transitioned to America, which was really relevant for our population. But there are four field trips where we collaborated with students from all over the county in developing these forms, and then they presented all of their experiences to other school districts for a day, which was great. And then the last way that we've been working really to help students feel connected is through just helping in the community. And I want them not only to feel part of Carlington's, but part of Carnegie and Crafton and Roslyn Farms. So as part of this, there's been a lot of volunteering. A lot of it's been through the free store, students helping to feed their neighbors, their students. It's also been through cleaning up the community. They went out and cleaned. And also even students nominating other students. So I was allowed to tell the story, but one of our students nominated another student because one of our lovely staff members told me of a program called VING. I don't know if anyone's heard of it. You can nominate any minor, nominate someone that's 18 or older for the VING award, and you get $1,000. And when she told me, I'm like, I don't think that's, I don't know two people that get this award so quickly, but we did. So she nominated her peer, who had been a single mother, who had been in school when she was 14, struggling to get by financially, and she nominated her, and she won. So now she's able to use that to go into her post-secondary schooling. But I think these pictures just make me so proud to see students from Crafton, Carnegie, and high school all coming together. They take so much pride, not only in our school now, but also in their community, and I have seen just their sense of self-worth increase immensely. Their participation in school, their attendance in school has greatly increased. So these are the little things that when we see those horrible numbers, it's really discouraging, but there's a lot of good things happening in Carlington. So hopefully we can keep those up. Now that's the end of my talking, I'm sorry, I ramble. Now it's going to be CHIL. Is that on here? Is there?
Dr. Surti, I have a question. So that when an at-risk student graduates, what could the parent do?
I have to be trying.
What could the parent do to keep that at-risk child, well, nearly adult, to keep from doing the ultimate worst thing?
So we've had parents that have been amazing at working with us. I think the biggest thing is when we can keep communication open between the school and the parent.
Even after graduation?
Even after graduation, for sure. I still have students from last year that I've been with that come up, they visit, they check in. They'll try to email me and gracious now, and they're long graduated. But if parents communicate with the school, it can be so helpful. And we can even get to before the partial hospitalization with collaborating with the parents. Ms. Vice has done a great job at helping us get family-based services in place where therapists will go to the home, work with the family dynamic, work with outpatient therapists and tents of outpatient. So the more participation and collaboration we have, it definitely decreases the risks for a lot of that. Any other questions? Any other questions? I wanted to make this short and sweet and then everyone's, the time is valuable. But I'm just, we're going to go over some of what we saw in all three buildings with Chill Project this year. I am going to start up here at the Juniors and Senior High. I didn't introduce myself also, I'm Rachel Johnson. I am the children educator up here at the Juniors and Senior High. So these are the numbers for my room. You will see two different numbers for drop-ins. I will just explain quickly that I do not count students who eat lunch in my room towards that bottom number because I'm not assessing them for acute stress in that moment. I have the same typical 15 kids per lunch period that eat with me, whether it be because of social anxiety, peer issues, overstimulation in the cafeteria. But they're not necessarily in distress at that time, so it would just kind of skew the other numbers. So that's why there's two different drop-in numbers. But up at the high school, I saw 5,391 students this year. I'm averaging about 35 kids a day. That's including kids who are coming down from classes in distress as well as the lunch. If we're looking just at students who are leaving class in distress, I saw a little under 1,800. And that reached about 189 different students in the building. I'm not sure what our total number is, but that's a significant portion of the students coming down at least once during the school year. Average visit is about 17 minutes. So I am getting the purely in and out to go back to class. And of the kids leaving class, coming down in distress, I'm seeing about 11 a day. And I do want to point out, most of the reason, which those of you who were here in October when I presented some of our early data for the year, it continues to be stress, which is just kind of a catch-all category for school stress, work stress, things with teachers, anything like that. That remained my highest category of 538 of those drop-ins. And then overstimulation, whether that be from gym class, lunchroom, study hall, and class came in second. And then I do just want to point out this one other category over here, which is crisis, which when Dr. Serdi was talking about those risk assessments, those are students who came into the children that I had to call for a risk assessment, whether from Dr. Serdi or Mr. Canty or Ms. Barnes. And that was at about 25 this school year. Then this is just kind of breaking down of the months of what I saw. I do think it's interesting that October and February were of the biggest spikes, with October coming in at highest at 291. My guess is because we're coming in around the end of the first nine weeks and then about the mid-year point in those times, the novelty of being back at school is kind of worn off. Stress is up because grades are coming in. And that goes back to kind of school stress being my number one reason for kids coming in. So that's kind of why there are spikes there. Just some other things that we did in the children. I do push into the seventh and eighth grade in classes to do mindfulness lessons. So these, all of our seventh and eighth grade students in the entire grades will receive these lessons monthly. And we kind of work on skill building, things like patience, choices and consequences, those kind of things. I did run a social skills group or facilitated it with one of Dr. Serdi's interns this fall. And then about halfway-ish through the school year, I implemented a morning mindfulness group during homeroom. So this runs from 7:15 to 7:45. It's unstructured, so kids can stay for a few minutes or stay the whole time. But this significantly cut down on those students who utilize that time during homeroom, coming down during the rest of the school day and missing actual instruction time. So they would use this time just to be in the showroom, gets low lighting, nice music, just to relax, set themselves up for the day. Or if they need to check in with me, they were able to use that time, so they weren't missing instruction. And as for family events that Ms. Emily and I attended, we were at the Franklin Back to School Event in August and then we were also at seventh grade orientation.
Hi, I'm Emily Weiss. I am the licensed therapist up here through the Chill Program. And this is about my 2.5 year here. So I really appreciate the attention that you're giving to this and thank you for having us. So I do provide the school-based therapy for our students here. They can either come to me through direct referral from families. A lot of them do go through the SAP program and come from counselor's Dr. Serdi. Currently, I have 37 kiddos on my caseload. That includes the kiddos that are designated to me through their IEPs. 13 of them are those IEP kiddos. So the IEP determined that they could benefit from my service. So 13 of those kiddos, I do have eight referrals currently on deck. So like Dr. Serdi said, I'm at max capacity right now. And that is also accounting for the kids that are coming up from Crafton and Carnegie Elementary. So that is not counted in those numbers. So I've already taken into account the seniors that are stepping out, the sixth graders that are coming up. And then on top of that, I do have eight still remaining to be opened. As far as primary diagnoses and the breakdown, I would like to think that kind of goes with some of the things that Dr. Serdi already presented. So my highest thing, PTSD, so post-traumatic stress disorder. Whether that's from a single experience that they have had in their lives, whether it is kind of ongoing trauma that they're experiencing within their family systems. I do have a lot of kiddos that also fall under generalized anxiety. So some of that can walk hand in hand with the PTSD. Some of that can also be, I'm worrying about what's going on today. I'm worrying about what might happen in the future. I'm still worrying about things that happened three weeks ago. So I do see a lot of that. And then third, I do see autism spectrum disorder. And I agree with what Dr. Serdi has said. I have seen those numbers as far as the kiddos on the spectrum rise as far as my caseload. And then the others are just oppositional defiant disorder, disrupted mood dysregulation disorder, which trouble regulating mood. ADHD, so the lack of focus, the lack of ability to kind of sit still through class. Major depressive disorder. And I think I covered all of them. Oh, I'm sorry, substance use is on the bottom. None of that is 1,000% for sure. I am not a substance use and abuse counselor. But just based on conversations that I do have with the kiddos, I suspect that at least 14 of them are actively using or have used some form of substance in the past. I will do my very best to give this data. Unfortunately, I have two therapists, so Brandy Hagerty down at Carnegie Elementary and Maggie down at Crafton, were not able to be here tonight, so I will do my very best for you. Brandy down at Carnegie Elementary currently has 34 cases, so 34 littles that she is seeing, with five on deck waiting to be opened. And then at Crafton, Maggie currently has 14 kiddos open. That number is a little bit lower and that's only because Chill was only established a few months back. So she is actively working to get kids on the caseload. And she currently has three on deck and I am sure there's probably more coming.
All right, so moving down to the childrens at our elementaries, you will see these numbers are significantly lower at the elementaries than my drop-ins at the high school. But that is because we do have more acute distress up at the high school. And you'll see that Laura at Carnegie and Sarah at Crafton run a lot more groups and do a lot more lessons than I do. So they are able to be available more for those tier-one interventions than I am just because my room is far busier. But you'll see that Laura saw 855 drop-ins. So those are for the distresses leaving class drop-ins. And she reached 175 different students, averaging about 19 minutes for each visit before they are sent back to class. And she saw about nine students a day. At both elementaries, you'll see their highest reason for drop-in is scheduled breaks. So these are typically kids who have 504s or IEPs where break time is scheduled in there. So before they're getting to the point that they are in crisis or full distress, they are able to go and take a break in the children, reset themselves, work on some of those coping skills that they have learned usually from the mindfulness lessons and are able to get back to class without any big outbursts or anything like that. This is her monthly drop-in. I didn't have prior to December, but she saw from August to November 313 students. And then here are the different numbers. You can see she also kind of peaked in February, just of my data. And then here are just some of the groups that Laura runs down there. You'll see a lot of it focuses on social skills or specific symptom coping skills, things like anxiety, organization, and then some specific grade level ones. And then Laura is present at a lot of the family events at Carnegie. And she also brings Doobie with her at any of those events. And she is there every day to greet the students and work with the students in the children. Unfortunately, Doobie was not able to make it here. He would have been a better presenter than I would.
I do believe he's in Carnegie celebrating one for a three-day today?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, my bad.
It's his birthday.
His birthday is also today. I just wanted to add, this is not something that Ms. Laura was involved in, but last summer, Ms. Brandy, myself, and Ms. Rachel, we did run a social skills group for the sixth slash seventh graders and just tried to focus in on, if anyone has met a middle schooler, you know they're kind of all over the place and a little unsure of themselves. So we did run a group over the summer, I believe it was eight sessions long, just trying to focus on what to expect as you come up here to the junior, senior high school and some of the skills that you might want to start practicing as you acclimate yourselves to this environment.
That group was also important because it got these kids to recognize who I was, so they knew who the children teacher was at the high school and also who their new therapist was going to be because it was open to only students that were on Brandy's caseload transitioning families. All right, and then down at Crafton, so this was the first year we were at Crafton. And Sarah has done a great job integrating Chill into the school community. She saw 939 students, 122 of the student body were seen. She was averaging about 13 minutes per visit and seeing about six students a day. And just like Laura, her scheduled breaks were her highest ones. So again, IEP 504 kids. Again, for data, you can see her peaking around February and October, just like mine. And like Laura, she runs groups that focus on executive functioning, anxiety, social skills. She does run an autism support and emotional support social groups. And she does a big bodies program where it connects sixth graders with first graders. And she was also present at many family events with her therapy doctor, Phoebe. And here's just some pictures of Phoebe at some of the events at Crafton this school year.
And similar to with Brandy at Carnegie, once Crafton is more established and better up and running, I do hope to pair with Maggie down there and get groups running for those sixth graders as well.
Does anyone have any questions for us?
Hi, yeah. Hi, my name is Terry Lee. I have a son at Carnegie Elementary. And I can't thank you guys enough for your hard work, you as well, Dr. Serdi, and Don Alexander as well, he's tremendous. Kind of building off the question that you were asked earlier about kids who age out of the system, what infrastructure is in place for summers? And times like that when, I mean, because kids don't stop having anxiety on June 1st. So I'm curious, not only what's in place, but kind of what the philosophy is. Because I also recognize that you guys need a vacation too. It's not, you know, it's, you know, so there's a lot of factors in play. I'm not trying to assume that there's any one-size-fits-all answer, but I'm just curious if somebody could speak to the overall philosophy of that.
Sure. I know as far as the therapeutic aspect is concerned, we do not get our summers off. So for families that are already involved in Chill Project, they have the ability to continue on seeing me or Brandy or Maggie throughout the summer. If a family would need support and connecting with something that they would prefer or needed more of over the summer, I know that, I have a case management background, so I do try to connect my families. And if I don't have that ability, I do connect them with service coordinators who can facilitate those kind of transitions. I know that someone else had asked about after they were leaving the building and graduating. I do have about six to seven seniors this year. So I know my goal is to talk with them about what is coming next. Do you want to continue therapy? Where are you going to be? And trying to set them up with that on the front end, so they don't get sent out into the world with nothing. Because mental health is really challenging right now. Did that answer your question? I feel like I didn't hit all of the points.
These groups that you're offering this summer?
Correct. I forgot my my groups.
And extended school year?
So over this summer, as we did last summer, we are trying to run actually three different groups this year. Two of them are the social skills groups I touched on with the younger kiddos. One of them is more of a, I don't want to call it healthy relationships, but just better understanding like, hey, as we become an older teenager, these are the personal hygiene things that we should start to practice. These are the things that we should look at as far as relationships positive. And maybe these are the things that are happening in relationships that are not so great and we should take a step back. If there are recommendations or things that you're seeing as far as deficits, I'd love to hear the information and see what we can do to make those things available.
I think our personal needs and my son's personal needs are being met tremendously well. I have, I have no issues there. I just, that question just occurred to me in hearing you guys talk, so.
No, and that seems, if you hear anything, please direct them to us. If anyone ever has an idea, I'm always looking to make our program better and more accessible for our kids. So please, reach out.
There's also an extended school year program that the Chill Project will be running out of Crafton. So students with IEPs who show a regression over long breaks will be possibly, they found that's the best program for them to qualify for this summer to continue for several weeks, receive treatment each day for about a long program.
Yeah, it's about five weeks, yeah.
You mentioned healthy relationships. Do you guys run that program through Wesley or?
Yeah. I couldn't think of what I exactly named it. I was pulling ideas from that curriculum and kind of making it around with a few exceptions. I don't have the official curriculum, but I was trying to follow it as closely as I possibly could.
Do you have that at the high school autism workhouse? Yes, they do run those groups.
Rachel and Emily, I need to add to our meeting, but it's a very important question. So we have a significant number of ESL students. How do you reach the kids who come from societies that say in Eastern Europe, Africa, or whatever, where stress is not talked about? How do you reach them?
That's where our mindfulness lessons come in. While I am only in the seventh and eighth grade classrooms at the elementary schools, I believe every single student receives monthly mindfulness lessons where it teaches them about how to talk about stress, how to cope with that stress, what it looks like. So students who might not be learning that from a cultural background or from their family are getting some education at school on that so that they can recognize it and ask for that help when they need it.
And I currently have one ESL student on my caseload. And it is a lot of that where the cultural piece is kind of in conflict with what they are experiencing here. So while it might not be easily kind of transmitted over to the family piece, I do try to reinforce, these are the skills that you can use while you're here and experiencing these things, even if your family is not necessarily open yet to that.
All right, good. Board members, any other, any questions or comments? I'll say a quick thank you to all three of you. Tremendous information, concerning, inspirational. Thank you for having me. And quick update from Courtney Caldwell with HR.
Hey, hi, my name is Courtney Caldwell. And I run HR for Carlington School District. So this is going to be an overview. I started with the district in November. And so from where I started and to where we're at now, just kind of a high-level overview of where we're at. So in November, we, when I came in, we had several positions with vacancies at the junior, senior high school, Carnegie, and Crafton. Now in May, we have hired 16 total people since November. So we hired a van driver, lunchroom playground aides, paraprofessionals, just tonight, the principal for Crafton, the assistant superintendent, general food workers, and two custodians up here at the juniors, senior high school. We also offer summer positions to, we try to tailor it to students, but we also offer it to different members of our staff that would like to apply. So right now, we have our ESY programs. We have minimal positions to contract out this year. And we also have some that have, teachers that have been willing to also substitute for when others are on vacation. Our summer helper positions are all slated to be filled for technology and custodian helpers this summer. So not only does that help to give jobs to students, but it also helps to give them real life experience in the workforce. So when we look forward to next school year for 2024 to 2025, we see that the numbers around the building, we have seven vacancies for Crafton, five for Carnegie, and eight at the junior, senior high school. Some of these numbers are from what we discussed earlier in the personnel agenda and just how we are shifting at the district. and just how we are shifting at the district. So if we break that down, we look at Crafton Elementary, we have three paraprofessional vacancies, which come out of our meeting tonight and creating those. And we have one general food worker, one lunchroom playground aide, an LPN, and a special education teacher. Carnegie, we have an LPN, three lunchroom playground aides, and a school secretary. Up here at the junior, senior high school, we have one paraprofessional coming out of a resignation, the speech therapist, which is at part-time, which we created this evening, and then we still have six food service vacancies. The six food service vacancies might sound like a large number, but I'm told that we are in a really good position from where we've been, so. So when we analyze the needs of the district and we strategize our response, so we want to think smart, we want to think specific to what our needs are and how we're going to source those needs, measurable in terms of data, in terms of how we can reach people that are looking for a job, attainable results, relevant, and then also time. So we know that time is of the essence in hiring, so the different parameters that I've put into place has helped us to move people through the process in a faster rate, but also to have a more comprehensive orientation. So one of the things I did was I sent out a survey to 14 of our new hires, asking for answers to gather insight as to how the hiring process has met the needs of them as they went through the process. So some of these went all the way back to November, some of them went all the way till May. And it just kind of looked at a few different core pieces. So this was the measurable data, there was also questions where they were able to provide feedback. So when we looked at how informative was the correspondence for your interview, the average was a 9.8, so this was out of 1 through 10, 10 being the greatest they could read that. How satisfied were you with the communication you received during the onboarding process? That was at a 9.3. How satisfied during the onboarding process, 9.2. Satisfied with getting answers to their questions during the onboarding process was at a 9.6. And so when you're going through an onboarding process, there are a lot of questions. So being readily available does help to kind of just answer the questions, but also to give them someone that they can relate to and then connect with when they do start on their first day. How informed did they feel, a 9.4. And how apprised did they feel of the district's mission, vision, and values? So that was at a 9.6. So as you can see, that makes it that we are actually doing a really good job of highlighting what our values are for Carleton, what we would like for our students, and what we also would like for our faculty and staff. Going back to that survey, the biggest thing I saw in where people could leave comments was that people wanted an orientation. They wanted something where they had some tangible interaction with a person with the district, and they were able to either facilitate training or just human connection. So also on that survey was, how did they hear about the job? And so an astounding 72% of our 14 new hires found out about the job from Indeed. So that just goes to show that we are out there on, you know, the internet, but also that's where we're going to pull many of the candidates. So while we work to put it in all different places, if we focus on where people are applying and where people are finding the jobs, it is on Indeed or the internet. So expanding hiring outreach, so some of the things we've done was, we sent out a survey to all of the general food workers, and so Ryan and I partnered on that, and just kind of assessing where we're at for next year. Are they planning to return? Are they not? Are they undecided? That helps us to know, are we going to have a huge spike in people that we need to hire for general food workers, or are we going to be pretty consistent with the six that we need to hire? The other survey that was sent out was the one that we just discussed for the hiring and onboarding process. At Pensbury, students actually put flyers in every door, just announcing that we were hiring for specific positions. Our district website is something that Rachel and I correspond with, and we make sure that it's updated pretty much down to the minute. Something exciting that we are approving tonight will be Final Site, and that will also give us a new platform to help to advertise that we are hiring. So when people visit our website, we're able to have specific banners that can show and highlight that we are hiring. There are new opportunities for growth, of course. Those fall into streamlining the process and making it more interactive for new hires coming in, actively reaching out to all applicants, which is something I do pretty regularly. As soon as the application comes in, I usually try to reach out within 24 to 48 hours, once it's been reviewed by the different departments. And then we're utilizing social media such as LinkedIn, PA Educator, PASVO, PASSA, and then our district website, of course. This was the actual flyer that went out to Pensbury, so this is what was placed in all the doors. And then social media outreach just kind of goes through that we are on Indeed, we're on Facebook, PASSA, Twitter, LinkedIn, and PASVO. So changing our internal process for hiring makes a more concise and efficient and personalized approach to hiring, which is something I'm slowly implementing. I also created onboarding folders, which help to create a localized place where they are able to have all of the data that they need for starting the new job. Included in there is also business cards to different entities that they'll be interacting with, including myself. So if they have any questions, we are readily available and they have our contact information in their hands. And then considering orientations in the future to be more in-person versus just paperwork. And something I'm doing now is every new hire has an appointment, so that way they come in, they are able to, most times, meet their direct supervisor, they are able to turn in the paperwork that's already been sent, ask any questions, and are able to also collect other things that might have been missing. So obviously, we have a hefty to-do list, of course, and hiring outreach through different vehicles of communication, just making sure that we are hitting all the different avenues that we can to find the people that we need to fill the positions so that we can serve our kids to the max capacity. Final Site, which will be our new district website, will help us with some of those. And then continue to evaluate and review our processes to make sure that we are staying up to date with all the legal things we need to do, but also with what we can do to make it a more human approach to hiring. Any questions?
Question? Thank you very much. The board is good, we'll move on to committee reports. Director Appleby, commenter, update for Parkway West?
Oh, yeah, thanks. There's always things going on at Parkway, I also have to be great in this. Sorry for everyone, but. There are more students at Parkway in total now than there ever have been, it's over 13,000 students. Apparently, there are 299 applications already for next year incoming students, and Dr. Copeland anticipates that to grow by a large amount. There are 300 students graduating, so it looks like next year they're going to set another record. And as you may or may not know, our students, they spend a half a day here at our high school, junior, senior high school, and then they go to Parkway for the second half of their day. And I, I, I get the sense that, you know, because they're there for half the day, we don't necessarily hear so much about their achievements, but if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read the names of some of the students we've got. First students being inducted into the National Technical Honor Society, Sarah Loney in, she's in welding. Jamison Greiner in diesel, Alice Peck in healthcare, and Noah Trumbett in auto body. And the director's list for the third quarter, we've got several students. Forgive me, I don't have the pronunciations, so I'm going to do my best. Andreas Fletcher in culinary, Jessica Gillo in veterinary, Jocelyn Griffin in cosmetology, ceremony again in welding. Malad Majed in health. Wyatt McHugh in carpentry, Alice Peck in health. Moyo Rikis? Rikis, thank you, in health. Jay Smith in culinary, Camilo Talamonte in diesel tech, Brianna Warner in culinary, Braden Warner in carpentry. So, you know, they're, they're on the, the director's list for honor students in the third quarter. I think that, I think that, you know, we had a good indication for those of us who went to Taste of Carleton, just how really involved and just meaningful career tech is for students who participate in it. I've got a good sense of that, and of course, you know, they won the contests and that was, that was great. I think they deserved it, and also just looking back, we were calling out the kids' names, or calling out the winners, and just how excited the kids were. Exciting venues, and I'll let. I'm sorry.
Pushcart.
Thank you. I'm so wiped out. I'm going to let Director Pushcart fill in the details, but White House, in the White House, our director, Dr. Copeland, got to speak a function, so that's all I have.
So I know folks on the board know, many of you in the room know, that my day job, I'm the chief operating officer for the Workforce Development Board for Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh. And as a part of that work, then we've created a registered apprenticeship program in cybersecurity. So people are getting hired into jobs with no college degree in cybersecurity. They're going through and getting paid to go to training, and then also getting on-the-job training. And through that work, we are taking folks from jobs in construction and other fields into really well-paying, family-sustaining careers in cybersecurity. As part of that work, then I was invited to speak at the White House on that work by the Office of the National Cybersecurity Director, and Director Copeland from Parkway West also joined that event, because Parkway West is one of the first career tech centers within the Commonwealth to have a cybersecurity program. So it's very exciting to see that Parkway is really leading efforts to think differently about career and technical education, and how do we think about career and tech as an option for students who are interested in both college and career, because a lot of the graduates of Parkway West are coming out with 15, 16 college credits in some cases. And Parkway is actively working to register that program as a pre-apprenticeship program in cybersecurity, which would mean that those students then have the opportunity to go directly into that cybersecurity registered apprenticeship program after graduation. So Director Copeland did a wonderful job talking about the role that career and technical education plays in creating these really strong pipelines and the opportunity that K-12 districts and their partner career and technical education centers have to prepare our students for futures in the workforce. And we got little cookies that have the White House seal on them, so I'm very excited. I did not bring one back for you, Jim. You love cookies.
He was very good at silverware.
Wonderful. Thank you both for the update on Parkway, that sounds exciting. Director Honschar, Pathfinder.
Jim, unusually I have a very long report that I'm going to cut off until next month. Except for the time-sensitive things. May 31st is Pathfinder picnic on the grounds, come in the afternoon, they'll be able to come. Graduation is June the 5th, please come, it's at 10 o'clock in the morning. There's no graduate from Carleton. The last day of class is June 6th. So the rest of it I'll give next month, but there is something that did come up, and it's very germane, especially for a large group like this. One of our AIU representatives is Brian Wells. He's been coming to our meetings every month. After our meeting was over, I asked him, why is there such a turnover of ESL teachers from the AIU? I know that Dr. Hoffman and possibly Dr. Searcy have different opinions on Brian. He says that they start out with a bachelor's degree at $45,000, which to our taxpayers is greater than the median income of our households, but for professional teachers, it's sort of low. After one year, they go up to $45,100. After the second year, they go up to $45,200. After the third year, they go up to $45,300. So with the inflation of the last three years, they're behind the eight bone after the third year. There's not a step increase until 18 years later of $30,000. So that's our problem, the cost, the contract is not going to be negotiated until 2026. So we're going to continue to have that problem. So, thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Rachel. Shasta, Director Zalinski, any?
So actually, on April 27th, I believe it was, was the Shasta ceremony. We had two students from our district that were recognized. So there was, there's always a male and a female recognized from each of the school districts. And we had Bailey Vetter and Jonay Harrison were recognized this year. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the event, so I can't share much more than that. But I can try to get more information from Mr. Lockren, because he was there. Because in the past, it's been a very great event to go to her Charlie Batch speak one year, and they always have a really good presenter there. So congratulations to our two students from the district that were recognized.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Let's say to PSBA, Director Boogie on the?
I really don't have an update, because everything is still in limbo in Harrisburg. I wish I had more, but that's all.
Okay, reading the tea leaves, any, any interesting observations?
I'll be up there the entire month of June, so hopefully I come back with something.
Sounds good, all right, thank you very much. Dr. Simcik is not here, so anybody have any foundation updates? Other than we all enjoyed the Taste of Carleton, which was amazing. Get an update from Chris next month. Any questions on any of the committee reports? If not, we will move on. Under section five of our agenda, we have a rather lengthy list. Does any board member have a preference? May I, may I make a motion for the group of them, or does anyone want any?
Round them up.
Round them up. If anybody has any questions, we can call them off, I know. But I'll entertain a motion to approve all the items under number five, one through 10. Do I have a motion to further 10 items?
Remove.
Second.
Remove consecutive vacuums. Any questions about any particular item or comments? If not, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, aye. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
On the custodial maintenance agreement from Slide 9, I just want to thank the custodians and municipal boards for a very frank and cooperative discussion in reaching their contract. And I feel really good about it, I think they do too, so thank you.
Joe, thanks. If I could add to that quickly, a couple of years ago when Secretary Ed was here, he walked around our building and said to our superintendent at the time that he was so impressed with our facility, and he could tell that our team takes pride in what they do, and he has not seen a building of our age look this good anywhere in the States. He told us to tell our crew how good a job they do, so. Moving on to section six, there are five items. I'll entertain a motion to approve items one through five under section six, under section.
Second.
Remove consecutive vacuums. Any questions or discussion? Move to the second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, go ahead. Do you want to talk about the proposed final?
I can talk about it a little bit. I'll, for the sake of time, put my three-hour intel budget until next week. But no, basically, all I want to say is tonight is, basically, what are we doing? How did we get here and what are we going to do next? So just really quickly, tonight, we are going on the proposed final budget. What the final budget, it's required by our PA Act 1 of 2006 that basically states that we have to put a budget together prior to our final one. So what it basically is, is a comprehensive snapshot of what could be our final budget in June. It still allows us to make, you know, minor changes to it all the way up until we do final budget approval on June 18th. And basically, what this does is it allows us to have time to post this budget on the website, and we'll also have it in the office for the public to look at, to view, to bring up their comments, you know, to the next finance committee meeting or for me. So basically, how did we get here? The last two, three months have been a lot of sitting down with administration, working with the board. The last couple of months in our finance committee meetings, the goal of myself, our administration, and the board has always been trying to come up with a budget, striking that balance between that financial stability that we all need, but also meeting the evolving needs of our schools. And that is a challenging process, as we've heard, all the changes that happen. What we carefully consider, various factors that we look at is the economic inflation escalating employee costs, reduced federal funding. And that was a very important key this year because the last couple of years, two, two and a half years, we had COVID money, the ESRS money that has been able to come in to supplement, to help us to do programs, to do, have extra staffing, and to help the kids, and that's what the focus was. But that money is now gone. So now it was just through decisions, we had to decide, what are we going to keep? What are we going to have to eliminate? And that's where that fine balance that we have to look at, this financial stability and what's the economic factors that we need to look at. As Director Volgeron said, the state budget impasse. Right now, we're going to pass a proposed final budget that we have no idea how much money really that we're going to get from the state. What has been proposed is this astronomical huge number, which will help everybody, help the district, to help us, you know, to cover a lot of our costs. But then, you know, realistically, is it going to happen? From what we're hearing, no, it's not. We're only going to get a slight increase. So there's always that instability that we're dealing with. And most importantly, that's coming up in our future is our impending renovations that we're going to be doing in our schools, that especially the ones that Dr. Kreider talked about this morning. Or is that, was it this morning? It seems like, right? So while our current financial position is very solid, it's imperative that we proactively plan to sustain the stability in the future. As much as we don't like to, you know, raise taxes, we really don't. We don't want, we want to do what we can not to raise it. We have to be able to sustain what we have for the students from year to year to year to year. So that's why in the finance committee meetings, we focus on a five-year plan so that we're always looking at, you know, what is the effect of this? And how's it going to affect us five years down the road? Of course, that changes every year, but that's one of the solid tools that we use when we plan our budgets out. So in light of all these deliberations, it's apparent that we have to make some adjustments. And they're necessary, potentially including possibly a tax increase. And honestly, I don't like to say that, but it's something that has to be brought to the table. And, you know, we don't ever want to, you know, hide anything from anyone. So in this proposed final budget, there is an increase in there. However, the final amount of the tax increase will not be decided until June. So in our finance committee meeting in June, which we always encourage the public to attend, that's where we get into the meat and the potatoes of the budget. We're going to be discussing, you know, where are we going to fall in that ladder? You know, we might have more information from the state. You might not have more. But, you know, that's where we're going to sit there and finalize, you know, where we're going to go for the future. So that's basically what we're doing here tonight. It's, like I said, it's just a comprehensive snapshot of the final budget, but we still have work to do. So this time, you know, any questions?
Questions from anybody? Just to confirm one thing I thought I heard from you. So the state is likely not going to pass their budget before we have to pass ours?
We basically heard that it's going to take a miracle, and it's not.
Okay. And we get about a third or maybe 30% of our revenue from the state?
About 30, 40% of our revenue comes from the state.
So it's a huge chunk.
It's a big, it's a big chunk, right?
So we have to kind of guess at what they're going to do? And there's a little bit of...
That's exactly right.
And the state publishes a inflation index. That's probably not the exact number, but they produce a number that all the districts send the basis from which districts is set there.
For the index, as far as... Right. That's exactly what Act 1 is, is it sets the rate, the maximum amount that a district can increase their taxes without having to go out for a referendum or...
And that rate this year is higher than it's been in 15 years?
Probably 15, 20 years.
Yes, it's six some percent, which is largely reflective of the inflation that we're seeing.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question? Do we get funding for the ESL population or...
Not that covers what we spend.
No.
We do get some.
Is that from the state or is that...
Federal.
Federal.
Yeah.
Just curious.
In federal, I think our budget is like 3%.
3%, but it's not very much. It doesn't cover.
Oh, yeah. I know that, but I'm just curious.
Now, we get a little bit in the state. I don't know if we'll get the difference, but...
It is a risk factor.
Well, I think in general, it can be stated that the local lift, as far as paying for our facilities or educators or, you know, all those things is and has been an alliance share of what we do. So, I mean, it's a community effort that makes these schools what they are, more than anything else. I think historically, like back in the 70s or 80s, maybe, the state was funding at a higher level. But that's decreased over the years. Like Dr. Kreider just mentioned, the federal contribution is 3% currently, which is up. And I think a lot of that money is, you can't just say, well, here is money in the general fund tier market for services and things too. You know, it's something we've always taken seriously in the stewardship of our resources, and we'll continue to do that. We all pay taxes here. I don't think anyone's going to pay any more than we have to. So, you know, and this, this is June 11th. Is our, it's the second Tuesday in June.
It's the finance committee meeting. And June 18th is when the final...
Probably is when I, you know, tend to encourage it in this room.
We always encourage it.
We probably won't have impressions of it.
Any other questions on Keith's budget overview or the motion that's on the table? If not, we can vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Under Section 7, Student Activities, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 23, 24 field trip that is presented.
Second.
Move to the second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Not to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Old business, any director of any old business they would like to bring up? New business, any director of any new business they'd like to discuss? Open forum questions from the audience? If not, grab to-go containers, grab food. I'll turn back to our board. Any open forum questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move to the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.